Don't tell me you don't need the help. You just, you can leave.
Yeah, yeah. Your last one is gone.
Right.
My hands smell like bacon.
The update's lighting in my phone whether I want to or not.
Hi, it looks like it's six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to open it. Let the record show that we are missing Kathleen Bowes on, right?
Yes.
But we just have Kathleen, so we need a motion to excuse Dan Valley. Motion to excuse those two.
So moved.
Thanks, Matt. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
So moved.
Please join us with the pledge of allegiance from the garden.
Flagard.
Flagard.
Oh.
Oh.
Left.
Face.
Face. Or.
Arms.
Arms. Freezing.
Freezing.
Arms.
Arms.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. Thanks to the God of which stands, law, nature, and your God. In this world, like in this world.
Order.
Flags. Right.
Right.
Flags.
Flags.
Post.
Post.
Flagard.
Flagard.
Oh.
Oh.
Order.
Order.
Arms. Right.
Right.
Arms. Right.
Right.
Face. Forward.
Forward.
Arch. Flagard.
Flagard.
Oh. Oh.
Thank you. Thank you for the civil effort. Give him a hand. Yes, we are recalling the meeting. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have a, and then it's going to be different.
Municipal Clerks Week proclamation. Move on to the American Legion Poppy Days.
They were gonna be in person, but I'm, they must have not been. But I do have, um, they were out there at the poem that was presented along with it. Um, they were supposed to be in person.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. You saved myself five bucks. There are due to the municipal clerks proclamation that we have here in honor of our municipal clerk. The vital to the efficient administration of city government and the delivery of services to the residents of Ephrata. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as record keepers, custodians of public documents, and vital links between the citizens and their government. And whereas the dedicated efforts of municipal clerks ensure transparency, foster public trust, and uphold the democratic process. And whereas we recognize the importance of their responsibilities and express our gratitude for their professionalism, dedication, and service. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Ryan, Mayor of the City of Ephrata, do hereby proclaim the week of May fourth through the tenth, twenty twenty-five, as Municipal Clerks Week in Ephrata, and encourage all citizens to join in honoring the municipal clerks for their valuable contributions to our community. As witness, therefore, I have unfused sent my hand and caused the seal of the City of Ephrata to be fixed to this eighth of May, two thousand and twenty-five. Congratulations and thank you. Public comment, none seen. Give me a minute. All right. Well, thank you. Oh, wait a minute, this isn't for me. So who, which one, whom are we presenting this to? Katie. You said the whole thing, you didn't see this.
I didn't make this on the agenda. This wasn't on the agenda, but I did it.
The record, I wanted it a whole month.
So I don't know if you're allergic.
Alergic?
Good. This is presented to you from the staff and management of the city. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, everybody.
I'll give you more space.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
Obviously.
How long you been doing this?
Almost a year.
A year. All right. See, look what you got to look for.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
The motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, second? And? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Frank County Health District Annual Report.
I believe that's in your packet. Have any questions? We can do our best to answer them, but.
Just so not?
Be guessing.
All right. And the first quarter finance report.
Yes, I have a presentation for you guys. It's gonna look a lot like the presentations from the last quarters. Hopefully we'll have it. Um, sorry, I'm standardizing. You're not seeing new things every quarter. But if there's anything that's missing from this report that you would like to see, let me know and I'll add it in. So this is our general fund budget. Um, what we are hoping for is twenty-five percent since we're quarter of the way through. Um, so we're over that with revenue and we're under that with expense, so we're looking good there. Our sales tax, um, for February, so sales tax is two months behind. So February with Christmas, like sales tax, um, and our January and March are just below where we were last year. So that's a good sign there. We're at about four percent higher than same quarter twenty twenty-four. So our library fund budget, this is a property tax base, um, which we get in May and November. We are still trickling in a little bit. People pay late, we get that trickle. Um, but we're looking good there. Parks, exact same thing, still trickling, as well as some grants that we get in. Our transportation benefit district, this is mostly projects. Um, the being the first quarter, spring, still had snow on the ground. We weren't doing a whole lot in projects, but we were getting reimbursed from the projects the previous. Three funds, this is the property tax base. We were starting some projects, started to get some bills, and then we still haven't gotten those back. Specifically, if you looked at the last one, um, we have a big grant, over a half million dollars. So this is just taking out that grant to make it look a little more uniform. Since it's reimbursable, we won't get that money until we spend it. So it just kind of throws off the numbers there. This is our fuel tax revenue. Um, we are down from this time last year in twenty twenty-four. We expected to be making more money in revenue. Gas is still more expensive than it was last year, so we budgeted, we budgeted a higher revenue. So far, we are not getting a higher revenue. We are below what we are, what we were first quarter last year. So this is those ARPA funds. Um, we did officially turn in that report to the ARPA people, I believe it's federal. And so what we did, as we discussed in Q, Q three and Q four, we moved those balances to the street funds. Instead of having to return funds, we're able to just use them on the streets. This is our equipment rental budget. Um, this is mostly funded, if not all funded, by transfers from other departments. We have recently ordered a couple more fleet vehicles as well. Sanitations, this is our garbage. Um, we are high on revenue and low on expense. We're gonna keep an eye on that one since that is such a much bigger disparity than I expected. Um, so we'll keep an eye on that one. Water sewer. This is about where we expected to be a little low on revenue there. So we'll keep an eye on that as well, but we are also low on expense. That one does not include projects. There's a couple projects in there, but it's not the big construction fund project. This one is the construction budget. We're expecting that revenue to be low because again, these are reimbursed, a lot of these are reimbursable. So once we spend the money, we'll receive the money. So we've spent some. We're gonna have to keep an eye on that and make sure that as we're spending the money, we're getting those reimbursements in. For a while, we were waiting a month or two. Um, and I'm wanting it to be a little bit more instantaneous. Any questions with that?
So after looking at all those individually, encapsulating and kind of an overall three sentence picture, how are we doing?
We're on track for the postpart. Um, there's a couple, like I mentioned, we're just gonna have to keep an eye on a little bit closer. The reimbursements for the water sewer construction. Just wanna be on top of that, make sure we have that cash in and out. Um, I don't personally like waiting on funds. So if we can be waiting on them to send the check instead of holding on to it and waiting to ask for the money, uh, that's what I've wanted to do there. And then just keeping an eye on sanitation.
Right. So six month projections, SOP, we're doing fine. And you don't see any glaring stop signs down the road.
Not right now, not if we continue on the path we're on.
Okay.
We have major emergencies, then emergencies are emergencies.
Okay. Any questions from council?
I feel like I've asked this one before, but the, the change of the, uh, the fleet over to the enterprise model, does that change the accounting model for the, for the rental pool? I never know whether to expect something, a big shift in the rental pool to something different.
So basically, the way that the pool was working is we would spend the money and then pay back into the fund. What we're wanting to do is receive the money, then buy the vehicles.
Okay.
We are not even close to having the money to be able to do that.
Right.
Because we're still, it would have to be essentially double paying, putting money into the pot to pay off the previous vehicles and to pay for the next ones.
Okay.
So eventually, we'd love to get there. Um, double money, we're too tight right now for that.
And I was pleased to see sales tax revenue up, but it sounds like we're still too early to tell whether we'll hit those numbers this year or not.
Yeah. Big thing with that sales tax is we are expecting an influx because of the county, because of the jail going in. Um, and we just need to remember that there is not going to be an ongoing sales tax. We're not gonna get that in three years. So one-time sales tax, it equals one-time purchases, not salary or anything like that.
Sorry, um, I don't remember seeing it in there necessarily, and this might be a question for the future, but is there a kind of a, I guess you call it unreserved fund or like an equity balance somewhere that has kind of non earmarked money? And has that been stable, I guess, over the last, especially year as we've undergone some changes?
So most of the general fund is unassigned money.
Okay.
Um, and it has been.
Stable. Offhand, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you have any idea what that balance is roughly?
For the general fund?
Yeah, just the unassigned money.
I think it's about four million.
Okay.
Of the seven.
That's what I was remembering, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One more pop question. The fuel tax money, is that unassigned or is that tied to streets?
It's tied to streets.
I'm so.
That has to rub on it because you get all sorts of monies and that they have specific places that they can go. You really don't have too many options with it. So.
Because you really oversee like. You literally oversee like seventeen different small businesses is what it is. They all have their own revenues and their own expenses, right?
And some of them have reserve funds that they don't report on because their reserves could be just transferred in once a year. So we have a fire reserve fund, um, so that we can purchase a new fire engine when eventually we're gonna need one, even though we just got one. But that only changes once a year, so I don't report on it for you guys. That's in our big annual report.
Any other questions? Looks like you passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Open up the public hearing for the Transportation Improvement Program.
Uh, Mayor, Council, um, what, what are you, what are you in this? A public hearing for the giving of public the opportunity to speak on our sixth year Transportation Improvement Plan. City required to have a transportation improvement plan. Projects to receive any grant funding for. Well, grant loan type funding. So what we're opening up right now is, um, if they're getting public comment on the Transportation Improvement Plan. The Transportation Improvement Plan should be updated annually and it's included in submitted to state for the State Transportation Program.
And it's just an overall plan?
Yes.
It has an order, but not necessarily order of appearance.
And it's just putting an idea and putting a plan together that we, this is what we wanna do and this is the orderage we'd like to see it done in. Um, and, and being modified at any time.
Right. Depending on funding sources and criteria, the number six could be number one really quickly.
Thing that I remember in the past having been floated out there is always kind of, you know, bit of a dream list in addition to everything else, but I remember discussions at different times about another northeast arterial route from kind of alongside the airport. Anything in there?
It's in, it's in the campaign.
Is it in there? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is stuff you wanna, you wanna have, you know, your.
Sure.
You know, say ideas, it's in there. All of a sudden, broke, it became available and we have real.
Right. And then the, going back to that, the railroad crossing that's always been in our dreams, has there been any change from, from Burlington Northern's side of things?
I understand that they're not gonna allow another.
Right. Nothing to it?
Yeah, you can, yeah. They say you can put a crossing in wherever you want, but you're gonna take one out.
Exactly, yeah, you can, yes.
You get to Ephrata, that's all you get. Over, you can go all you, doesn't matter. Yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, on the, at one point in time, we talked about doing a study to figure out really where those funds should be going as a priority. So if the arterial is a priority, it would help identify, you know, larger areas that need it, um, over others maybe. Has that study been done? Is there funds for that? What's the timing on that? Okay.
To get that traffic analysis and look and see if we're fitting our money for it. And address other issues along with, um, not just around the travel, will be. We're moving forward, we're moving forward.
And that, does that happen before work on this begins or they kind of just have to coincide based on?
They're trying to do their own.
Okay.
This is a, this is our plan. Plan. Once we get the information from the traffic study, we can, whether it's next year or the year after, start implementing those ideas into the transportation improvement.
Got it, thank you.
One other one I remember being on the list a few years ago, and I can't remember if it got crossed off. Uh, Canal Street, did that ever get paved over on the, uh, northwest side?
Canal Street hasn't been, okay, there's our property owners there. They don't wanna hear is it's, the city is in the business of maintaining stuff that's given to us. We should be in the business of building.
Sure.
And so that developer would now build that approach.
Right.
And so we proposed to our property owners, we can, we can assist them in doing an LID and then they, they forgo it on.
That was my next question, is we have they pursued or has shown any interest in that?
We wanted to do it all and then you don't, you don't hear anything.
Okay.
Once they find out that we're not gonna pay for it, the, the trajectory falls down with that.
Gotcha.
Is that something we require now when people build in areas like that? Thank you.
It should have happened then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's getting out.
Okay, any ones from the public? Have anything they'd like to bring up? David, you wanna talk about the port? Something out there we need to. Do you have any comments about the port? Cause referring to this?
No, not really. Not that that's gonna affect the rail. Okay.
Okay, great. Public hearing's closed. We get on to resolutions, let's talk about it some more. R twenty-five thirty-three, the Transportation Improvement Program for twenty-six to thirty-one. Any other questions? If not, we need a motion to accept.
So moved.
So moved. Thanks, Mike. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Phil. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So moved.
Wellness policy update?
Hello. Thank you for updating our wellness policy. Um, it was created in two thousand and eight and then, um, throughout time, it slowly wasn't utilized as much. And so one part I wanted to bring in with human resources was bringing the wellness back and, um, helping out our staff. And what they're wanting to do, and so for the wellness policy, it's a little bit dated. It's not currently relevant with some of our needs and wants. Um, we do a poll survey currently out with our staff to kind of get at a gauge of where they're headed out with well-being and, um, you know, what we can do, what we're doing good with the city already. We're gone those types of things. Um, we have initiatives plans for our staff and we're hoping that with this policy update, we can, um, go ahead and pursue those plans that we're looking at doing. So I just had to update a couple of things, uh, make them a little more relevant to today's staff.
Questions? The motion to accept resolution twenty-five thirty-two, the wellness policy update.
So moved.
Thanks.
Second?
Second?
Second.
Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Bo?
Aye.
Posed? So moved. Items for council action, the new logo.
I'm gonna try one more time to get Valley in really quick.
Is it new?
Okay. Councillors, Mayor, are you showing my screen again? So as we know, it's been an ongoing project that we welcome to, or taken. Make it quick, sorry. So we have narrowed it down to the two logos and we have the one color palette in there. So what we're asking you to do is.
Ooh, the paper's getting smaller.
We have ballots for you guys, and I do have Bo able to do this as well.
I'll get Valley in.
She's requesting her join, but she doesn't.
She says she's.
Yeah, she's there.
She just, she's viewing. Just wondering if she's just watching this. Yeah, she might be on her phone.
Valley was messaging me, she tried to get in, I think it was during the, uh, flag salute. And so I don't think anybody joined her in, but her and I have been texting. So I don't know if she's gonna try to get in again or, or what.
Do you wanna wait for her? She's coming.
Just trying to get in, she says. Did you set the calendar right for this?
Yes. So check her email.
If she is able to watch, we could just put her on a speakerphone.
She's on a work computer, so she's not gonna get the invitations.
Okay. Do we wanna call her?
Call her, I think.
I have a number here, we can call her.
Here's the phone number, send it to us.
She'll be there, Jeremy, so you can call Katie and she can hear that way, that's okay.
Can you dial her in on Teams? We'll let you do that.
If I wasn't streaming, I could. If I wasn't streaming, it could. Okay, just I have a link through text, so she should be able to jump on to her phone if she wants.
She doesn't have Teams on her phone though. It probably won't work, she's just going to have to go in through the website.
Think it would go to a browser, but. Oh, nope, nope. We did it.
We did it.
Valley, can you hear us?
Yeah, I got you.
There we go. Okay. Make it pop in. Okay, so here's what we're looking at. Okay, so I'm going to ask for the council. You choose between logo A or logo B.
One or the other.
If you go with logo A, the majority votes. We're done.
We're done.
If we go with logo B. I will then ask, do you want? B1, B2, or B3?
The difference is the suns.
We chose the color palette last week, so it's the same color palette through. And then of course you can see what it would look like on some of the swag. I made sure to take out the backgrounds of the blue that we could see on a black background on both. And so I would like for you to choose one or the other. If you choose the other, then choose one of those as well. And if you do have any feedback on the one that you chose, that is fine, we'll perfect it and adopt it.
Valley and Bo, you guys can just send a message to Katie for your preference. Katie, can you blow up the bottom half?
What was that? Sorry.
Can you blow up the bottom half? Options of one, two, and three are a little.
I messaged in the chat, not if anybody was paying attention to it.
Thank you, yep, thank you.
Let me know when you're ready to grab some.
We'll scroll up just a little, so we can see everyone again. Just even if it's just cut off like one section, yeah.
How'd we do?
Wait for one more, one more.
It's me, huh? I'm slow.
Take your time, take your time.
I don't know, here, you can just take this. I'm going to do this. I'll circle this one. Because I don't, yeah.
That looks like. There's option B. And looks like for the sub-choice, we have a two-way tie.
It's hard to do.
Why wouldn't we? Okay, so it's between B2 and B3.
Two and B.
But that was this sign and this sign.
The bottom two signs for those who are seeing one side.
Revote, just put those two options?
Yes.
Yes.
And we're still stuck to them. Maybe on the back, if you could just write two or three.
Gosh, I'm throwing, it's not showing.
Right here, right here.
Oh, I didn't see yours.
Everybody's writing one or one?
The Christmas vacation version?
Valley was three.
Okay. Have you heard from Bo yet?
He was sort of, or him and Valley both.
I understand that the background of doing business in the city of East Florida, you do our stuff pretty serious. You like the weeds.
Okay, okay. B3 is the winner. This one down here. Okay. Thank you, guys. Now, if there's any other feedback, just let me know by the end of the day and then we'll get that adopted everything, so.
Got Katie, you got it done.
Thank you, everybody, thank you, guys. Good job to you, guys. Stop sharing.
Oh, we can mark that off. Finally. He just witnessed a big deal.
All right.
All right. So without all of this, anything else you want to bring up for it before we go into executive session?
Um, just, it is. This week, if you're up for election, you'll have to file by the end of this week. They set a date for a workshop with the port. The feeling is there's enough to discuss with them that it should be a full day on a Saturday. They could not do June 7th or June 14th. Targeting one of the weekends in June though.
Looking for dates right now?
Excellent. While we're looking at our dates, I want to go back to committee reports. And Ron, could you give us an update on what we talked about on Tuesday, about what's going on up at the jail and the property?
So, um, the property has been annexed, you know, officially now. We've got the, the, we don't have the actual document that's from the state office of financial management yet, but they have agreed that they have everything they need, so it should be just a matter of probably a week. But once, once that happens, actually at this point, access and everything should have changed. They, Tom, Tom Gaines, essentially the project manager from the jail facility, did make contact with his, his construction firms and they are now changing their process to now make sure that that's what they just said, so. But at this point, all the information from here on out will come through us. They will not finish the short line in the county. That has not been, it's been approved, so actually that, that may, may have to go through some additional review by us. But it is very close as well. And the jail facility, the PPE, property has all done.
So the size of the freight just got a little bit bigger. So approximately, what is the total acreage up there that we're talking about?
Altogether, it was about 89 acres and it is a public facilities designation. So it can be city, county, state facilities. Supporting, supporting the general, municipal.
All right, cool, great, thank you. Questions? So we're going to wander into executive session about selection of site or acquisition of real estate?
Sure that we got you there. Jordan is here. We want to congratulate him for coming on to the park board, which was part of the deal. I'm sorry, but Jordan Anson, who's going to be a member of the park board, was approved on the, on the consent subject to get that in.